It is now six thirty. I'm gonna call this meeting the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the Madam City Clerk to give us the roll call.
Okay. Good evening. Mayor Protem Suarez.
Present.
Councilmember Kearney. Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman.
Chair.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Present.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman, she's gonna lead us in the word of, excuse me, she's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And then, in the absence of our pastor tonight, I will lead in the word of inspiration.
Everyone place your right hand over your heart and recite along with me, I pledge allegiance
To the flag of United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Thank you heavenly Father for allowing us to be here today, here in the city of Lawndale, in these here chambers, to bring service to your people. We thank you Father for allowing us this chance and the opportunity to serve your people. We thank you for all our department heads. We thank you for our public safety professionals. We thank you Father for our residents who participate tonight. We ask Father that you would bless this, this meeting, that we will have fruitful conversations and discussions for the betterment of the community, and that this community will continue to prosper under your guidance. In Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, first item on the agenda is gonna be our public resafe- safety report. Let's see, our captain is here.
Pardon me why I lower this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for July sixteenth through August fifth. And I will begin by discussing some of our notable arrests and investigations. So on July seventeenth at approximately one AM, Deputy Santana conducted a traffic stop at Rosecrans Avenue and Hawthorne Boulevard for vehicle code violations. Deputy Santana contacted both occupants and detained them pending a stolen vehicle investigation. A check of the vehicle's paper plates were turned with no record on file. Deputy Santana subsequently queried the VIN and discovered the vehicle was reported stolen. The suspect was arrested for driving a vehicle without the owner's consent, and he was not a resident of Lawndale. And then on August first at approximately one AM, Lawndale SAO Deputy Hone responded to a call for service regarding a female who was walking around Rosecrans Avenue and Ramona Boulevard with a gun in her hand. Deputy Hone located the suspect on the corner of Rosecrans Avenue and Hawthorne Boulevard and recovered a firearm from her purse. The suspect was arrested for having possession of an unregistered firearm. She too was not a resident of Lawndale. And then regarding our traffic-related incidents, approximately seventy-five citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. Twenty-four of those citations resulted from directed traffic enforcement on one hundred and forty-seventh street. And then lastly, just as a reminder, tomorrow is National Night Out. It will be celebrated at Lawndale City Hall on the grass area in front of the City Library at six PM. Everyone from the community is invited and encouraged to attend. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Yes, ma'am. Any, 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 any questions, Captain?
Before we get there, can we address that right now on television, they're showing the last council meeting? If they can get that adjusted so that we're showing this one. I've already got two texts. Thank you for letting me interrupt.
Okay. No, no, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Yeah. Someone's taking on that right now. You're good. You know, we could do that one last one. Okay, let's hear from Protem. Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know, so I had a quick question. I think over the weekend, there was an event in Inglewood, and I think some of our residents heard. So I don't know if we have any, like, information on how that gets dealt with, and so that we prevent that for future events.
It was an event that occurred in Inglewood?
Yeah, apparently there was some kind of festival, and I know other cities got more of the volume, but I think a few of our residents were hearing it, and so I don't know if that's something that our city can reach out or find information about. I didn't hear it myself, but I did see some posts about it.
I had not heard about that event, but I will look into it.
Thank you.
It was at the SoFi. It was a big music festival, started on Saturday, ended yesterday. And you, the wind would carry the noise over.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the public safety report? Thank you, Captain, for the report.
Thank you.
Chief Kane, how are you, sir? Let's hear from LA County Fire Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. Acting Assistant Chief Kane, Los Angeles County Fire Department, with your monthly statistics and public safety report for the month of July. One hundred and ninety-two total calls for service. Three of those were fire-related. Two of those were outside, or trash, rubbish fires, and one vehicle fire. One of the outside fires did involve somebody or a person experiencing homelessness, which was on Manhattan, Marine and, pardon me, just off of Rosecrans and Marine. A hundred and twenty EMS responses, eighty-seven of which required ALS interventions by our paramedics. We had eight responses with our advanced practitioner unit for the month of July, and Engine Twenty-One and Squad Twenty-One will be heavily involved tomorrow night for National Night Out. That concludes my report for the month of July. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions of the public safety report? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Acting Assistant Chief.
That's me. Thank you very much, sir. Have a great night.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. All right. We are now on our agenda under oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to the city council on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you would approach the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on and it gives you the signal to start wrapping things up. And just for extra fun, you can watch on the monitors, and you can see how you are progressing in your time on the, the mic. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. Just simply approach after the person before you has concluded. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Orly Benessis, Lawndale resident for twenty years. I heard there was a, like, maybe a speed bump that they were gonna put on the west side of one hundred and forty-seventh and Hawthorne. We're hoping if you'd consider putting like a speed bump on one hundred and forty-seventh and Freeman. That's a nice wide intersection that I don't think residents do giant donuts every so often, and for, for the safety of dog walkers and anyone walking. Really hope you'd consider that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did you give us, what was her name? I didn't get her name.
Give us, give us your name again, if you can come up to the mic.
Orly Benessis.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, folks. My name is Bruno Dos Santos, resident of Lawndale, one forty-seventh and Freeman. Want to echo Orly's comments that speed bumps on the west side of one forty-seventh would be most appreciated. All too often, we see reckless driving, speeders mostly, people running the stop signs right by the school district building, often at very high, high speeds. As Orly mentioned, there are often donuts that are being done there at all random hours of the day. Doesn't matter if it's ten in the morning, two in the morning, two in the afternoon. Sometimes we've seen them when the students are leaving school. And so, you know, we've seen that we've gotten these nicely freshly painted crosswalks, and I feel like they are doing something. So, you know, your actions have not gone unnoticed, and so we thank you for that. But we think that another measure to help slow down vehicle traffic would be a great second step in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Daryl Ratcliffe. I also live on one hundred and forty-seventh street, the corner of Freeman and one hundred and forty-seventh. I happen to have one of the units that sits right out and looks out at the street, and I can see the intersection of one forty-seventh and Freeman, and invariably, there are people that just ignore the stop sign completely and run, run the stop sign and speed. And as iterated before, there's donuts that are performed in the intersection. We're just hoping that we can get, you know, something to slow the traffic down on one forty-seventh. We're just concerned that there's gonna be an accident sometime that's gonna cause some serious injury, but I just wanted to pair up what the other two individuals are saying. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Priscilla Rivera. I also live on the intersection of Freeman and one forty-seventh. I'm also here for the same reason as my neighbors, speeding, the just blowing through stop signs. Some sort of measure where, whether it's more police patrolling, or if there's speed bumps on that street, I think that would be very helpful for the community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Andrew Blackney, and I'm resident on the east side of one forty-seventh street. And I'm concerned about the safety in one forty-seventh, not just on my side, but in totality on east and west side of the street. So I'm here today to advocate for the improved safety on this street. First off, I'd like to thank all of you for the multitude of effort that you've put in on our street. Installing crosswalks is a great way to educate the drivers and show them, hey, this isn't just a street for cars. There's people that live here and pedestrians that walk on the street as well. And I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department for the tireless work that they've done. In words of Sheriff's Department deputies that I've talked to, they could sit all day at my intersection and give tickets and never be in a drought of people to sight. Our street is an amazing street. It's full of residents that live, that live there and talk and communicate and have a great time. They have kids that walk and bike to school on this street. There's countless neighbors walking their dog. However, there's also crazily reckless drivers on the street that speed and pose a serious threat to the safety of the community. I'd like to advocate for speed bumps or some form of traffic calming to deter this excessive speed. These simple yet effective measures have been proven to reduce tra- traffic accidents and the fatalities of these accidents. If not speed bumps, I believe something like bike lanes would encourage a more sustainable transportation option, option for kids to get to school, as well as reducing the speed of the traffic. I think we should prioritize the speed and prioritize the residents over the speed of getting through our city. Implementing these traffic calming measures would give security to our residents. I bike this path most days, and I see just how crazy these drivers can be. One day, when I was coming down the street, I watched a person blow through three stop signs going excessive speed just to pull into their house a few streets down. So, I thought, well, what the heck? I went up to him and I asked him, why would you be so reckless on your own street? And he said to me, he said, I have more important things to do than to stop at these stupid stop signs. Now, I substituted the word stupid there for something else he said, but I think you get the point. And in fact, you know, I had an important place to be on June ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. I had to go to the hospital because I was nearly killed by a similarly reckless driver on the street. Without the fast-acting actions of Deputy Rodriguez, who applied a tourniquet to my arm, I would have bled to death on this street. And so I just encourage you and, and implore you to act to decrease this level of recklessness and reckless behavior on our street through some form of calming measure. Thank you for your time, and I hope you'll seriously consider this.
Thank you.
Good, good evening.
Hello.
It was determined at the last council meeting that this July fourth was seen as one of the worst illegal fireworks bombardments in years. During public comments, residents requested that safe and sane fireworks be banned. This recommendation again fell on deaf ears because there seems to be a misunderstanding. These illegal fireworks, these legal fireworks will still burn people and property and poison our lungs. They are not without risk. An Orange County grand jury report, Lawndale's law enforcement staff and city staff who gave up their July fourth holiday last year all recommended that safe and sane be given a one-year moratorium. If this council isn't able to provide a safe environment for residents due to safe and sane providing cover for lawbreakers, then we need a reset. The sale of fireworks only benefits a very small portion of nonprofits at the expense of residents. These self-serving groups put our lives and properties at risk, giving little in return. How much longer can council ignore the studies and requests from residents to impose a one-year ban on safe and sane fireworks? The answer lies in a famous movie quote, "Show me the money." In the last seven years, almost ten thousand dollars went from the sales of a fireworks booth stand to the South Bay Twenty-Five Club. There might be more than this, but this was a quick review of the records I had. It is indicated online that a current Lawndale council member is the head of this organization. What other council members serve on this organization? This year, the council voted to allow the Wesleyan Church to have a booth despite the finance department's recommending against it, against it due to late filing. I was later told that council members will be partnering with this organization to run the booth. Having worked in local government twenty, for twenty-five years, at a minimum, there exists a perception of a conflict of interest between overseeing the monitoring of the city's fireworks program and the need to fund this other organization. Currently, it appears that the South Bay Twenty-Five Club organization is not in good standing with the franchise tax board. A guaranteed number of patrol cars per quadrant, more undercover cars implementing drones or any other options would do little good, if not implemented alongside a moratorium of safe and sane fireworks. More importantly, the most effective deterrent of administrative citations needs to be retained and not gutted to protect special interests. Will the ad hoc committee discussed later tonight be able to look at all the options to suppress illegal fireworks with this conflict of interest with the South Bay Twenty-Five Club? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Deana, Lawndale resident. So let's go over what happened in Inglewood over the weekend. So this was a tech show or electric or whatever, dance music or thumping, whatever it was. It's so unfair to last all weekend long. Surrounding cities from afar, as far away as Torrance, whatever the weather condition was, carried this. It did carry over to my house too, and I couldn't believe it. A whole disturbance all weekend long. Most residents bombarded their dispatchers, whatever, wherever they lived, in what city. Like, what is that? Unreal to be put through that. So I get Mayor Butts wants to turn this into the big, you know, entertainment center now and take it away from LA. But I know, it's all about the money. It, it didn't matter that you disturb everybody's life for a whole weekend. It's not so bad if it's a one-day thing, but all weekend. It started in the afternoon and went till, I think, midnight one night and ten or eleven the next night. It's ridiculous. I can't imagine even living closer to that. And I like music, but I've never been into that crap. You must be high, or I'd wanna be high to listen and stand there and just jump up and down all night. Anyway, I still like rock and roll and a few other things. But also, to go on his fireworks stuff, thank God, I got my one fifteen illegal firework blast last night, so it woke me up. I was so thrilled when some residents of Lawndale has to get off by lighting an illegal firework in the early morning hours. So I'm glad he's satisfied, but the rest of us have to wake up with a sudden shock. These still, is still going on, all these illegal fireworks, as we decide, nope, that's another moneymaker too. But it goes on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing? I'm Latoya Jones. I live here in Lawndale. I just want them to just put more trash cans, 'cause I don't see enough trash cans here. And if we're kinda really all over, I'm working on that. And also, the buses to be a little bit later than seven o'clock, 'cause if I have to have a meeting at, you know, Los Angeles City Hall and then have to get here, just a little, for the people, too as well. They say they cut it off early at seven or something. It's hard for the people to get on this side of town, the people that is using the public transportation. So that would be nice if they can do it a couple of more hours. It's, it's seven o'clock and it's a little early there for people to get home, for people that travels. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna close public comment, bring it up to the dials for any comments from the council members. Let's hear from Ms. Cuevas, if you have anything.
No, I just wanna thank everybody for coming, and unfortunately, I can't comment on speed bumps at this time. That's all for now.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from Ms. Hoffman-Gorman.
Thank you for everybody for your comments tonight. I can comment on one forty-seventh. We do hear you. And we're looking to see what kind of options that we do have. So you are being heard. And it's a concern, not just on one forty-seventh, but on many streets in Lawndale. So we're hearing you, and thank you for all coming out tonight.
Mr. Peck, Kearney.
I just have one thing to the speaker about fireworks. Mr. Abram, if you're gonna accuse somebody, face the accuser and use a name. You said a city council. I'm gonna tell you something, mister. When I worked the South Bay Twenty-Five, I'm a member of the South Bay Twenty-Five, not a city councilman. So if you're gonna accuse people up here, use their names. Don't be a coward and say hi behind a council member. As president. Does it, you, you want us to go to battle? I will with you. But don't, don't ever accuse a city councilman of being a president of the town. The president of South Bay Twenty-Five is a former council member, Dan Dan Reed. So you don't have your facts straight. They come up here, have your facts straight. No, you're wrong. And with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague.
Ms. Suarez.
Thank you to everybody that came out tonight to speak. I'll just go over, so the 147th, I did want to ask a question of staff. So we did do, I know we're still working on one side of the 147th between Inglewood and, or not Inglewood, but Condon and Hawthorne Boulevard, that section. So, but the other side, we did do crosswalk painting. My question would be, is there like a monitoring period where you do the painting and then you find, wait a minute, like it's still, you know, there's still activity that needs to be deterred? Is there like a second level or a phase two that it goes to? I guess that's my question.
That's an excellent question, Mayor Protam. Yes, you're 100% correct. The crosswalks that the residents see on the east 147th, that was something that we could easily do without any traffic study. However, both segments of 147 is on the list for our traffic engineer to look into as far as the traffic calming.
Okay, so then at that point, a traffic study gets done to see...
Then we'll inform the council and, you know, we'll bring it forward as to what the options might be.
Okay, okay. That was my question. Because I know, as my colleagues mentioned, that's ongoing. And then with regards to, I think I had a question about, I did have a question because it came up here. So, and then I'll just, in full disclosure, I do sit as a member of South Bay 25 Club. And so I guess for conflict of interest wise, how does that get interpreted? Because we don't receive any money purely volunteer, we even pay money to keep the organization running. And for those of you that don't know, South Bay 25 is the Santa Claus slate that goes around the city. So we actually volunteer, put in a lot of hours, actually. I even hand-make some of the headbands that the girls wear. So really, there's no monetary benefit to sitting on there. And it's purely volunteer-driven. So my question would be, you know, how does that work? And since there's more than a majority of us on the council, does that impose any legal complications?
Sure. No, that's, those are very good questions. So under the Political Reform Act and the FPPC regulations, membership in a nonprofit organization does not raise a financial conflict of interest because, as you say, Mayor Protam, you receive no financial benefit. So there are some potential conflicts that would potentially arise under Government Code Section 1090, but that deals with contracts. And in this case, there wouldn't be a contract with South Bay 25, even if the permit to do business were considered a contract, which they generally aren't. That permit was going to the church. And then the church was flowing some of its funds to South Bay 25. I will say that I've only looked at this since this afternoon, when Mr. Moore first made me aware of it. So I have to reserve the right to dig a little bit deeper. But my first thought was, we're sort of a step removed. Again, I'll look into it some more and have a better analysis from Mr. Moore and the five of you. But at least today, I didn't feel overly concerned.
Yeah. And I think my question is, I would hate to see, you know, us have to stop a program like this because the children really enjoy it. It's one thing that I think our city offers that a lot of other cities don't. And I know, you know, I just recently got on it not too long ago, but I know some of my colleagues here have put in a lot of hours and it's really a passion project. And so that would just hurt me if that was something, you know, or if it was insinuated that it's something that, you know, we're trying to get benefit out of. So those were my questions. And then back to the music festival, I was just wondering, because it does, I mean, I agree with the resident that it does seem like there's going to be more festivals. So if there's a way that we can reach out, I mean, we have the Olympics coming, you know, and this is definitely something we want to address before we get to that stage. So if we can maybe start having communications with the city of Inglewood and talk about future events.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll reach out to the city of Inglewood and work with them on mitigating those noise effects that come downstream to the city of Longdale.
Perfect. Okay. And again, thank you to everybody that came out. Pass it along.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight and those who had the opportunity to speak. I want to address also the speed humps or the traffic calming issue. As you may recall, I asked for this to be on the agenda about two weeks ago to start the process of looking at 147th Street. Not in particular, speed humps, although the residents called out speed, speed humps, but more holistically, traffic calming. So it may not necessarily be speed humps. That's what we have to analyze. It could be some other type of traffic calming mechanism, whether it's the cushions or whether it's the, I forget what they call them, but the little dots or what have you. And also, you may, when you run over the dots, you've probably seen those little yellow things around town. We use a lot of those in the city of LA, which where I'm employed, for traffic calming mechanism. And they seem to work. I don't know to what degree or what have you. And that's what we're going to take a look at. So I want to appreciate you guys for coming and sharing your stories with us because public safety is our number one concern here in the city of Longdale. And especially when it comes to vehicle and pedestrian safety, we want to make sure that we address that. So we'll get the report. The report will come soon and we'll kind of massage and see what kind of traffic calming mechanism we can employ there. And not only the 147th Street, but for instance, the block I live on, in that one section, it's only, there's only one light that takes you to the main street, which is Inglewood. And so in the mornings, there's a race. Because you know, if you don't make the light, then of course, that's a whole cycle. You got to, there's two other cycles you got to sit through. So there's a race, right, for the light. And that stretch of block can definitely use some type of traffic commutism. You know, we used to have this big planter that we put out. So when you turn right, if you don't do it just right, that'd be the last time you do it, right? Because you would kind of, but believe it or not, someone, probably more than someone, because this is a huge planter, always moves the planter back in. And more than one person, it takes more than one person with this huge planter. So we need some traffic calming there. So we're going to look at it holistically. But I want to thank everyone for speaking on that issue tonight. Going back to the Inglewood noise, you know, I didn't know where that noise was coming from. I just assumed that someone was having a good party, right? Because we frequently have, especially in the summertime, you know, multi-parties, put it that way, like whole Saturday and Sunday, you know, in my quadrant. And so I had no idea that was coming from Inglewood. I found out later that it was coming from Inglewood. So I'm thinking that maybe, I'm sure there's some type of guidelines on Mr. City Manager for decimal levels and things of that nature that they're not supposed to exceed, you know, what have you. I know they have this little, not to be the decimal level cop, but they have this machine that you can measure the decimal levels or what have you to tell if the noise is not, you know, it's conduance to where it should be, what have you. So maybe we can ask them, what is the appropriate decimal levels? I know when the wind goes, it carries the sound with it or what have you. So we can look into that. That'd be great as well. The last one I want to mention is the, yeah, she mentioned, Ms. Jones mentioned about the bus. I'm not sure if you referring to the Longdale roundabout bus? Are you, are you, well, yeah, you're probably, you're probably thinking of the Metro, the Metro, the Metro bus, which, yeah, if that's the Metro, Metro bus, so we have to convey that to Metro, you know. But other than that, I want to thank everyone for speaking tonight. And we will close public comments and comments from the council, and we will move our agenda forward. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. What is the, yes, ma'am?
I had a quick question about the credit card payments. And I've never asked this before, but is there an itemization for those? Or do those, does that ever come on there? I mean, I would think they'd be treated the same.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, Mayor Protam, they are itemized. If you want to see the itemized, we can actually provide that to the council upon request of all the uses of the credit card.
I guess I was just curious, because we put all the other ones, and I would view the credit card statement as the same as a payable, I guess, in terms of disclosing them. So I just was...
I'll have to refer to the finance director and see what we can do to mitigate that.
I would just think you treat them equal as the other ones.
So I don't quite understand the question. The credit card, it's listed on the credit card that's being paid, the statement. There's details behind this, so that can be provided if needed.
I guess it's the charges. So we pay the credit card to pay the amount, but we use the credit card at some point to pay some kind of a bill. So do those, do those get disclosed at any point, like the rest of the payables do?
So yeah, any charge that's on the credit card goes through the same process as if a check was being issued. They all go through the same process. If it's over $1,000, it needs a three bids, the different approval levels, it's all the same for every charge that gets charged onto that credit card.
So I guess, so when we're voting on this, we look at the sheet and it gives the list of all of the charges. But I only see the payment made to the credit card, but I don't know what those credit cards actually paid.
Yeah, that's correct right now. We can add details if we need to on that.
I just think since you show one, it'd be curious to see, you know, what those actually went towards, I think.
Okay. We'll see how we can do that to kind of change it up a little bit. But we'll see what we can do to get that added in there.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
I'll second.
Consent calendar. Okay, it's been moved by Kearney and Second Basfueras in discussion on the consent calendar motion. CNN, Madam City Clerk, will you conduct the vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item seven, delegation of the voting delegates.
I will.
Yes, ma'am.
I will give the report. Good evening, Yvette Palomo, Assistant City Clerk, Mayor and Council Members. This report is to request that the city council make a selection of the voting delegate and voting alternate to represent the city at the 2024 League of California Cities Annual Conference, to be held on October 16th through 18th in Long Beach. In addition, staff is requesting that city council determine if additional council members will attend the conference. And if yes, direct the finance director to identify and appropriate the additional funding required and make the appropriate transfer of funds to the city council travel meeting fund. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report.
Okay, so they're asking us to appoint two delegates of voting and alternate delegate. We've done this a few times. Currently, we have Quavis as the delegate and Suarez as the alternate, no, yeah, yeah, you have the voting alternate. And so we have a chance to do two. First of all, who's interested in going?
If there's no opposition, I would like to attend and be the voting delegate.
You want to be the voting delegate?
I'm unable to attend, so.
Okay, I'll be the alternate if you need to.
Okay. Okay, so we're, so Quavis as the voting delegate and Kearney as the alternate. And then the other question was, if anyone else wanted to attend? I'm a maybe.
So.
We can discuss it when we get further. What we have to adopt is this part. Well, then you got to transfer them, make the allocation if someone else, well, you make the allocation, then we can, then of course, we don't use it.
Yes, okay. We'll put you down as attending.
So let's put Quavis as the delegate, without any objections, Kearney as the alternate voting, and Pullum Miles as tending as well.
Staff will do that. Thank you.
Okay, that'd be the order. Okay. And then we'll see if I actually go. Okay. Item 7B regarding the parking lot pavement. No, we did.
The parks, City Hall, right?
No, we did voting delegate, now we on the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of the city council. Ahmad Ansari, Public Works and City Engineer. Very quick background on item 7B. You have been witnessing the parking lots, the four parking lots that the contractor has recently paved, the Civic Center, the two parks, Jane Adams and Rogers Anderson, as well as William Green Parks, oh, three parks, and then the sheriff's station. So the council awarded the contract back on March 4th to Onyx Paving Company. There was a request for additional funds due to some paving conditions in a couple of parking lots. Project started on May 6th, completed on July 12th, and now we're at the stage where we can satisfactorily accept the project from the contractor, file the notice of completion, and pay the detention. That's what the recommendation tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. End of discussion on the report of 7B.
I do. I put you.
Oh, okay. You guys, oh, you guys getting fancy now.
Okay. Your report has since became under budget, correct?
Slightly, yes.
Okay, we had a contingency of 73...
You want to be fancy, Hoffman-Gorman is first.
I'm sorry.
Followed by Bernadette Suarez.
I could have swore I was a full of finish.
And by the way, we had this on the last system we never used.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have two questions. You've been out there to observe all these locations and they meet your inspection, correct?
Yes, yes, they do.
And then the other question that I have is at Jane Adams Park, and I don't know how it's separated or if it's all in the same contract. We have a dead tree that was replaced there because we had those old ones removed.
Yes, the...
Is that part of this contract?
That's correct. That's correct.
So we have one tree out there, I believe, that is dead.
Currently, there is a dead tree along the street on Marine? Okay.
In the area where the old trees were.
Okay.
There's like four of them. Those purple flowered trees is what they put in. But one of them appears to be dead.
The new one that they put in?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check on that one.
You mean the new tree?
Yes.
The new tree is there? Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, if that's the case, we'll make sure that we take care of that. Because it's under warranty.
All right, that's warranted. So do we get our money back on that tree? Okay.
My question was, and I know you've said this before, but the lifespan of the parking lot and then what are we going to be good about? Slurry seals and making sure to prolong the life of that, of those parking lots?
Yeah, typically, we don't slurry seal parking lots because of the turning movement.
Okay.
But there is another asphalt, emulsified asphalt product called Seal Coat, which is, which has more sand context for, content, I'm sorry, for the parking lots. And yeah, in time, you know, as pavement shows distress, we could consider that.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kearney.
My turn, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. On the contingency, you have $73,000, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, when we final release, you have authorized staff to release the retention of the amount of $30,000, 36219 for parks. What happened to the $73,000 we had?
Okay, let me clarify your question. Okay, so $30,000 is the amount of retention that we have held back, you know, as we pay the invoices for the contractor. So originally it started at 10%, then, you know, as time went on, you know, went to $30,000. So that's, that amount is really in the belly of the budget, you know, the numbers that are shown in the staff report. So the numbers that you're seeing, the 609 budgeted, by the way, that also includes the $50,000 the council approved for the pavement problem we had. But those are just numbers that once the... But those are just numbers that once the thirty thousand is paid, the six oh nine and the six oh seven is, is the final accounting. So in other words, you're not paying anything additional by paying the thirty thousand. It's just withheld from their checks.
So isn't the seventy-three thousand withheld too?
No, no, seventy-three thousand was the contingency.
So we didn't use that, correct?
Yeah, we did use that.
Well, if it came in the budget, how could you use it?
Well, we had to use it because of the cost, the additional costs.
Like I said, budget was six oh nine, we came in at six oh seven, so we were under the, under. So we, we had two billion dollars left or whatever it was.
Yeah, the.
How do we use seventy-three?
The, the budget, the budget amount of five thirty-six plus the contingency for the six oh nine.
Yes.
That also includes the fifty thousand that we asked for the paving problems.
Okay.
And then the actual costs, not only did we have to use the contingencies, but also the fifty thousand, but the fifty thousand was probably a couple thousand dollars overestimated. That was why we ended up with two thousand dollars in the black.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
Wait, the motion, right?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion separate. As written.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion been made by Kearney and second by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? CNN with the council, please vote.
For item seven B, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven C, relocation of Longdale Historical Society.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jason Minter, Community Services Director. This is a request that city council consider and provide direction for the possible relocation of the Historical Society to the Hoffman Community Center. As you know, the youth development and development center project would require the relocation of the Historical Society. So staff created one proposal to share with the city council. And we're here to take direction or answer any questions you have about that option.
Okay. You're not gonna walk us through the proposal? I mean, we're pretty good.
Happy, happy to do so.
Pretty good at reading it, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering.
I'm happy to do so.
Give us an overview, just so the public can kind of know what the, what the proposals are.
Sure, in the Hoffman Center, we do have a, a computer room that is somewhat underutilized. What we would, the plan would be to relocate some of those computers to a more public area in the center on the second floor. We'd have at least three, maybe four workstations. I have walked through with our IT director, just to make sure, IT manager, to make sure everything would be, you know, able to be used by the public that did want to use those computers. And it would free up the approximately thirty by thirty computer room, along with the corresponding storage area that we could then turn potentially into the new public history museum. We have a few months, obviously, before the youth development center becomes necessitated to tear down or to remove everything, but you know, if we do have some time to start moving it out slowly. And also, as mentioned in the proposal, it would be potentially to add a historic, historian as a part-time position to come in and be responsible for collecting, displaying, and then being, making sure that that facility was open to the public. And that concludes my proposal.
All right, thank you for that. I do have some thoughts on it, anyone have? Okay, we got two. Pat Kearney, you made it first.
Yeah, I made it first this time, I cheated. On the hiring of an individual, and I talked to city manager today about this, but like to have somebody that has knowledge of Longdale, not some outsider coming in and thinking he or she knows about Longdale. I'd just see somebody that knows the history of Longdale, take this job. And I read here, it's a twenty hour per week for the Historic Society and Center. I wasn't under the impression that they're going to use two different places. He or she was going to use two different places, the Historic Society and as a, what would you call him, rec leader? If we're gonna do twenty hours, it's twenty hours to the Historic Society, not to nowhere else.
I think from the, the proposal's perspective, the initial, you know, year or so, when they're just trying to go through everything that's been collected and organize it and sort it and find the best way to, to present it to the public. Obviously, we'd have public hours that we would want that person available to staff it, walk people through, do tours, you know, open it up to the public or schools for, you know, classroom field trips, whatever it might be. So yeah, the goal would be to have them available for staffing, but then maybe a few hours extra that they could, you know, be available in the center, use the computers, do the things they can't do when the, the museum was open.
Well, I'd like to see somebody that has some knowledge of Longdale before we, not some, not like one of my grandkids that live in Utah, come in here, they know nothing about Longdale. That's my biggest concern.
That'd make a lot of sense.
Yes, ma'am, let's hear from Suarez.
Okay, so I will start. I did like the idea of moving it to the computer room, so thank you. I do think there needs to be a dedicated space for that. My only concern though is more recently, we've been hearing about the economy and how things were kind of headed to a recession. My only concern is how bad things may or may not get. And usually, the community center is one of the first places we tend to, you know, downsize a bit on certain, I guess, things that we deem maybe extra. I would probably wait on jumping the gun on that, just at least until next year, so we can kind of see budget-wise how we're looking. That's my only concern, unless it's a position that you already can work it into an existing one or, or something of that nature, but I, and, and I'm not quite sure if that's the intent here either.
Well, as Councilman Kearney pointed out, having someone that is qualified to be able to manage the facility, know what's important, knows what's not. You know, we would ideally have a Longdale resident or a long time, you know, resident of the area that knows the history of Longdale. If we limit it to a senior rec leader position, that might limit some of our applicants, but our goal would be to do a very focused recruitment on trying to find someone that, you know, had all the skills necessary to, to do that position. And I don't know, you know, what our, what our candidate pool would be, but that would be the goal, so it might take some time.
Thank you. Ms. Quavis.
It is a part-time job, they would be getting paid what, minimum wage, is that?
A senior rec leader is not entry level. A senior rec leader would be the, the second step up from entry level. So, you know, it would be, you know, a couple dollars higher than, than minimum wage, but we can definitely go higher if, if the body were to approve that.
I like the idea of moving it to the community center, but also, our current staff could assist in doing the work right now and then maybe looking into next year, bringing someone to the, to man, a historian. That's my, that's what I think, because we currently have the museum and I don't think our residents know that we have a museum. We have to get the word out and if we use our current staff to set it up, even ask for volunteers, I'm pretty sure a lot of our seniors will volunteer to set it up. I know I would volunteer to set that up too. So save those funds and then next year, start fresh with setting up a staff member.
In my experience, working with a couple of different historical societies from, from previous, you know, career stops, if you will, there are people out there that have a knack for doing this job. And I think those are the people we want to, making the displays and being responsible for the cataloging and making sure that the right documentation gets kept. So, you know, the movement, the location, those types of things, just moving it from one storage area to another is easy and, and anybody can do it, so absolutely. But when it comes to actually creating displays, we're gonna need to, most likely, as mentioned in the staff report, buying some equipment for display purposes that we can store, you know, safely. So, you know, there is going to be some expertise that will help us build that room, but some of the basics can be done by any of the staff that we have, sure.
Okay, thank you.
So let me echo as, as some of my two colleagues kind of have already mentioned. I was kind of concerned when I saw the employing a new staffer. Not totally sure if this is the, is the, the time to hire a, a new staff. Kind of aligned with Ms. Quavis was saying, if we can basically put the program together and then moving forward at some point, maybe hire someone. But at this point, it's hiring someone to, to simply, not simply move it, but from move it from where's current location, you know, to the, the community center. I don't think this is really the time and the, the point was made that, you know, the, the economy is getting a little, a little iffy, but even, even if the economy was not, you know, iffy, I don't, I, I think it's a little too soon in terms of hiring, committing to hire someone for this position. I do love the idea, of course, moving it from its current location to the community center, the computer room. That totally makes sense, but, but only the hiring part, I think.
In discussions with city manager, you know, it would take a, the action tonight is not to approve a position that would have to come back at a later, you know, meeting, whether it be first quarter or mid-year or whatever, once the timing was right and we had a plan in terms of funding. If the council's good with the direction to eventually bring onboard a staff member and, and kind of start planning for that transition.
Okay. That's my input everyone, I already spoke.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
And, and I just wanted to say thank you, because I did earlier last year even volunteer my time to do this, because I really think it's important to preserve the history. So I really do appreciate staff looking into this and I do think it's a step in the right direction.
Well, I, I met with Ms. Gibbons, who I know is, I think, our last remaining, one of our last remaining volunteers, and she was wonderful, and her husband, and they kind of walked me through what was in there. But, you know, I know, as much as I've worked with these places in the past, there's someone that hopefully brings a little bit more expertise in terms of the displaying and making sure that is readily accessible to the community and, and displayed properly, because that's what, you know, our history deserves.
Okay, I believe we can just receive and file, receive and file this, am I correct, Mr. City Attorney?
I think the staff have a good sense of consensus and direction for moving this forward. I know the recommendation said that staff would prepare a staffing budget and estimated one-time cost to bring back, so.
Okay.
As long as staff feels comfortable with it, you're fine, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right.
But I won't go far.
You're still there, okay. Seven D, approval of the contract service agreement for graphic artists.
Thank you again, Jason Minter, Community Services Director. Back in May, prior to his retirement, Director Mike Estes was able to release an RFP requesting vendors to submit proposals for graphic artists and the production of the Longdalian. The RFP netted five different proposals included in the staff report. It talks about who the five submitting agencies were, along with the ratings that were done by members of our community services department and by the municipal services department. I think the recommendation was fully encompassing of the ratings that were done very consistently by the three individuals on the panel. And therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the council approve the contract with Qpress from Pasadena, California. I know the Longdale, Longdalian has not been printed for about four years. If we were to approve it tonight, we would try to get the first edition out by September 30th of, of this year. And we do like an immediate call for requests for articles or information to be included in the, the fall 2024 Longdalian. One other thing to point out would be, it's a two-year agreement, or staff are asking for council to approve a two-year agreement, giving the city manager authority to approve two one-year agreements if every, if the vendor agreed to hold pricing in terms. And that would be done on a one-year basis after the first two years was complete and then potentially another year. So I think that's important to, to point out to the council. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for their report. And this was, I guess, phased out because of the, when we went through the pandemic and the budget? That's why we reestablishing it?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe it was, you know, years ago, it was four, it was a quarterly that became a biannual, like maybe 2018, 2019, then we're looking to bring it back as, in the biannual format for now.
Okay. Any thoughts on this side? All right, Suarez, okay, there's one thought.
I like, I'm, I'm totally okay with the idea. The only question I had is if we're also doing digital, like email blast and, and all of that.
We are, one of my attempts, you know, coming on board is to work with our, our cable TV and work with our social media platform to really try to improve marketing. I think you will see, as, as was brought forward last meeting, the Parks Make Life Better campaign, little things like that, that can kind of trigger people to associate our programs with, you know, things that they may have seen or heard before. So I think in working with the electronic copy, so the Longdalian as graphic design will have the page flip that's available on the, on our webpage. But then, you know, using Instagram and using some of our other options to really get the message out and, and hopefully try to build our programs back as we continue to work towards Saturday hours and Friday evening hours and getting our rental program going again and all of those things, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I'm excited about this. One, I don't have to hear my wife ask me, whatever happened to that Longdalian? Why don't we, why don't we get that I relied on that? And she puts it on refrigerator like a lot of seniors do. And, and it, and it'll stay there no matter how old the issue is or what have you, but she enjoyed it and, and a lot of seniors enjoyed the Longdalian, so I'm glad we're able to reinstitute it.
Interesting, you know, the name Longdalian is probably the most unique name for like a, a recreation guide or a newsletter guide in all of the cities up and down California. And I've done extensive research and I think the Longdalian is the most unique and, and creative. So kudos to Longdale for coming up with that years ago.
Thank you for that extensive research. Okay. Mr. Peck, you want? You want to add something?
Yeah. I'm glad you went with Qpress. I know back when I was younger and a staff member here, you did Qpress and they do a fantastic job. And a little history about Longdalian. Growing up in Longdale, there were a few gangs here. And I belong to the original Longdalian gang. So you borrowed the name from our gang, so you're welcome.
Get the sheriffs up here or?
I know.
What he's trying to say is, he's an OG.
That's OG, brother.
That's what he's trying to say.
And thank you for the identity to it with the groups.
Okay, we probably need a motion for this, because this is a contract agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll move, you'll second.
Whatever, it's us two.
Okay, Suarez moved and Mr. Kearney second. Any discussion? We gotta have discussion first, before we, you guys have to wait to make sure, I called to make sure there's no discussion before we, we vote, because we don't want someone to say, hey, we voted, I didn't get to have a chance to discuss on it. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the vote.
For item number seven D, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. One more.
Three in a row.
The good news is this is last one. Just kidding.
I like the three in a row.
Okay, item E, approval of the resolution and agreement for Measure A grant funds.
Thank you, Jason Minter, again, Community Services Director. This is just a resolution that basically allows us to request funds that we are already entitled to through Measure A. So without this process in place, we'd have to do individual or separate council action. This was already discussed for the youth development center project as being the, a million dollars in the pot, along with about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that might vary slightly year to year based on property taxes. But that, we're due to get this year's payment this, or in September. So we would be up to about three hundred and sixty thousand of the recurring funds and that should be through 2026. And all that was identified in the staff report that would help fund the youth development center.
Okay. Well, you don't have to ask me twice if it's the youth development center and Measure A, A funds. So I'm glad to see this on the agenda. We're officially requesting what is due to us, as you, as you put it. Any discussion on this item?
If not, I'll make a motion to go staff.
I'll second that. Oh, you want to say, go ahead.
A rare appearance.
Oh, go ahead and make the vote.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Y'all just having fun tonight. Okay, would the council please vote? Oh, you know. I should announce who, who made the motion first. Yeah.
Who got it? City Clerk, it was Robert Pullum Miles, second.
Oh, I can't even see that, let me see. Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Oh, now I can see it. That doesn't count. That doesn't count.
Yep.
Okay. All right, would the council please vote if you haven't already?
It's okay. For item number seven E, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And again, with the new system, apologize for that. We'll fix it in the official minutes. And find out what happens, that happens again.
Okay, let's hear from the city manager. City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, tonight, I just wanted to let the council know, unfortunately, Ms. Jared Chavez, um, she is taking a new position with another jurisdiction, not too far away, actually, in San Diego County. So we're sad to see her go.
Yes.
I've worked with Jared many years. Um, she's, we hired her on as an associate planner. She worked, we have the senior planner. And then, um, she worked as an interim after I left for a little bit, as interim director, and then has maintained the position of Community Development Manager. You know, I've been very, uh, very proud of her and all her hard work for the community and work, you know, she has great customer service skills. We're definitely going to miss that. Um, she's got great organization, great leadership skills. Um, just last week, I saw her having staff meetings with everybody out in the middle of the Community Development Department, so residents that still come in and get services. So we really appreciate that and the residents being patient. Um, there's, you know, there's, it's always a challenge. Um, you know, we have a lot of code cases and a lot of site plan reviews and Jared's done a great job taking over from, you know, from, it's not easy to work with a city manager that actually was the Community Development Director. So, you know, it's, it's really hard, but she's done a wonderful job leading the department. We're sorry to see her go. Um, I'll, I'll turn it over for her and she has a few words to.
Thank you. Um, well, I'd like to say, um, that I'm going to miss everybody and I'm going to start by, by thanking the city manager, Mr. Sean Moore, because he initially was the Community Development Director and he hired me as an associate planner, as he said before. And I'm very grateful to have worked under, um, his department because I learned a lot and I grew as, as a, um, as a planner and now a Community Development Manager. So I am very, very grateful, um, for, you know, him being my mentor and teaching me a lot of stuff and I learned greatly from, from that department and from the city. And then, um, I'd like to also thank the, the mayor and the city council for all your support through, um, you know, my transition and during the time that I was, uh, you know, interim director and now the manager or, or department head. And, um, it was a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you so much. And also I'd like to thank the staff and the community for being, um, for making this place a really nice place to work and I really am going to miss you all again. It was a pleasure to, to be here in the city of Landale and now, um, I'm going to be moving to San Diego because of family, but, um, otherwise I would stay here with you guys, but thank you. I, I, I'm very grateful.
Very good. Anyone, any comments? Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
Jared, I just want to say thank you for all you have done for the city. I, you're, you've got big shoes that are going to have to be filled. You're appreciated. We wish you nothing but the best moving forward. But your pres, your absence is going to be felt. So thank you.
Okay, Sores, let me see what happens.
And I'm going to say, Sean, that's the only good decision you ever made. I'm just joking. I'm just joking. And no, we really enjoyed having you here, Jared. I'm all about, um, you know, taking care of family first and also personal development. So, you know, always feel welcome here, you know, in the future also. And, um, you know, looking forward to all the things you're going to do.
Very nice.
I enjoyed working, I started working with you when I was in planning commission and we had some challenges there, but I think we both grew together during that time. I will miss you because now I don't have anyone to go in there and, and complain about things, but, um, it's been a pleasure working with you and I'm glad you're, you're taking care of your personal things first, um, in your life. You need to be home with the family, but don't forget, you have another family here. So we're always, at least I'm always here for you.
Jared, first, I want to congratulate you on your, your new position. And I know you have to, you know, go home to take care of, you know, your family, um, as well. But I want to thank you for all your, your service. I remember when you first came here and you had to take the mic, give your report, a little nervous.
That's right.
Right, a little nervous. But as I told the, um, the manager, city manager, I think she's gonna, she's gonna do well. I could tell that, you know, once you get the nervousness out, and that's natural, that's, I mean, that's nothing, that's, that's natural, right? That you are going to develop into the ultimate professional, which you have. And you've earned every step along the way. It wasn't given to you just because it was convenient and because you was there and it was the easiest thing to do. It's because you deserve it. Sean is a good mentor, as you, you mentioned it, and he's right. He said that it's not easy to work for the, the person, the city manager, who used to be the, um, the director. I'm going to amend that to say it's not, it's not easy to work for Sean Moore, whether he was a director or not, right? Because Sean knows a little bit about everything, about every department. He can go in and make it happen. And sometimes you get resistance when you get, you know, um, people in new positions because they feel, you know, that they know everything and they're not as teachable as they probably can be. You're very teachable. I s, see how, um, you work closely with the city manager and you've taken a lot of his expertise, you know, um, in, under advisement, but then you made your own professional, you know, decision. Just like your decision to, um, to go for the certification, you know, for the, the Planters Association. That's something you don't have to do, that's a career choice to enhance your, your career, you know, what have you. But that kind of demonstrates that you're going beyond what is required for your job because that's not required for your job. You already had the job. Right? You already had the job, right? But that just tells me that, you know, your level of commitment to your profession, right? And for that, I want to congratulate you and I wish you all the success. And this is your home, home, and, um, you've always welcomed back here to visit, to stay, or whatever. Well, congratulations to you and thank you for your service. Did you already speak? You already spoke, right? Okay.
My turn? My turn to speak?
Oh, you didn't speak? Okay, go ahead, yes, sir.
Let's be invisible.
Okay. You didn't hit the button.
Jared, you've come a long way in public speaking. I call her Mini Me, I call her little Mini Me Sean. You've come a long way. You picked up a lot of knowledge from Sean, not all good, not the bad ones he has. But, uh, I will miss you and I see in the future, if you get married, that we all invited to your wedding, I'll be there. I'm sure Sean will be there, trying to tell you how to get married. I think he has a certificate in his wall, he had to tell you how to get married. But I will miss you very much. You've been like a daughter and I will miss you and congratulations in your endeavor and hope your family gets better.
Thank you. I will miss you all. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. City Manager, anything else?
Nothing else to report, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item nine is, um, items from council members. We have one item on here, nine, um, A, consideration of, consideration to create an ad hoc subcommittee to improve the efficiency of the annual illegal fireworks suppression plans put on by our councilwoman, Quavis. You want to lead us in this item?
Sure. Um, the reason why I asked for this is because I feel having a committee to make a decision or help us make the final decision. Right now, we're all over the place. We need to come up with a plan and having the committee will help us get to this plan and listen to the residents.
Okay, so it says considered request of city council, ad hoc committee to assist staff. Okay. I agree, I have no, no problem with that.
Are you looking for volunteers?
I'd like to volunteer.
Well, let's see.
I'd like to volunteer as well.
Okay, the two.
Okay, so I guess we answered the first question, the first answer, um, are we interested in creating such a committee? So I guess we answered that. Right, then, then the second one is, um, those who would like to volunteer? I see two volunteers so far that.
No, it's.
Well, I think Shirley wanted to volunteer because she's.
No, uh, I, I, I would like.
I know the two who want to volunteer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the volunteers.
I just make sure there's only two that want to volunteer.
Well, I don't think you'd have to in a.
No, you can, I was just making sure.
Yeah, no. It was up to whoever wanted to participate, you know.
Right, right, right. Okay, with that being the case, what we'll do is, it sounds like we have a consensus to, um, to create an ad hoc subcommittee to improve the efficiency of the annual illegal fireworks suppression plan, and we have two volunteers. Um, Quavis and Suarez will.
No, Hoffman.
Hoffman, Gorman.
That wasn't you? Oh, Hoffman, okay. Right? Okay, okay, I think I corrected. Um, Quavis and Hoffman, Gorman will.
No, Bernadette.
These two.
You're not, you're not on it?
I'm not, I'm not on it.
That was my question is.
That's what, that's what.
I thought because you had.
No, I wanted to see who was interested.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so you were trying to.
Sorry, sorry. Like, should I explain myself? Who wanted to be?
You wanted to be on it?
Oh, yeah, I think we both volunteered.
So you and Hoffman, okay. So Hoffman and Gorman, that's one person. And Suarez will be.
That's one person.
No, participate, yeah, will participate on the subcommittee. All right. Do we need to take a vote on that or if we can do that anonymously? Yeah, okay, so Hoffman, Gorman, Suarez.
My only question is, um, if we can start this, uh, or when do, when is the appropriate time?
I don't think you have to set an appropriate time because ad hoc.
Well, I just think for the, you know, for the public.
I could, uh, I'll talk to Diane and she'll send out, um, you know, requests for meeting times and we can get, you know, get, you know, probably, uh, we usually, uh, we wait for the, uh, report from Mr. Reyes and see what the report is. And that comes out in the next couple of weeks. And then we bring something forward, uh, for some times and dates for the ad hoc to meet.
Yeah.
My personal suggestion is that we do it sooner than later because we do have the holidays coming up, New Year's Eve, and I think that this should also be in place before New Year's Eve rolls around. That's my personal feeling.
You mean the committee itself or?
The committee itself, so that there's a plan, again, even on.
Committee, there's two of you already on it, so that's set. With the staff, so.
Okay.
Meeting's the next step.
Right.
Yeah.
I would like to have it sooner than later.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And it's an ad hoc meeting, so it's as needed. Okay. All right, so that would be the order. Let's see, the next item is nine B. Mayor and council members' report of attendance at meetings or anything else you want to hear.
Let's start with Ms. Quavis.
All right. On, uh, July 17th, I attended the Contract Cities Board of Directors meeting um, at the LA County Fire, uh, Department, uh, complex. Very well attended. Um, we had Fiesta night. Um, on eight one, I attended the League of California Cities, LA County Division Board of Director Installation Ceremony. Our new 2024, 2025 president is Dr. Michael Cow, Mayor of, um, Arcadia. Um, and then I have a couple of questions. Cool, is there anywhere we could review the online city directory? Um, I've been told that there are several names on the directory of people that are no longer working for the city. So if we could take a look at that.
Mayor Council will take a look at that and update it correctly.
And, um, if we could have, if, if I could have an update on the decoration of the utility boxes, uh, remember we were going to have a contest on the paintings of the boxes? I don't know what happened to that.
It's with the beautiful ca, I can let Mr. Reyes answer that. He's overseeing that program.
Okay. Should I continue because I have a list of things that I would like to see updated in, in my before, for Mr. Reyes.
Mayor and Council, would you want to update from Mr. Reyes? We can.
Um, I would like to also know, uh, the ridership for second quarter of the Landale Beat. I saw the bus six times, uh, on Saturday, only one person on the bus Saturday. So I would like to see that. Um, also, an update on the Manhattan Boulevard and Hawthorne Boulevard empty lot. What's the progress on that? It's getting, with the, some of the wind that we had, I had complaints that dust from that parking, uh, that lot is going into their building. Let's see, would like to know, um, the cost of having staff at our parks. Um, I feel that we need to have staff presence. Um, we have been getting complaints about people going into the bathrooms, um, adults that shouldn't be going in the bathroom with children. Maybe have a part-timer in there, but I, I believe we need to, uh, for the safety of our residents, we need to have our parks staffed. And I know this was, the budget is placed, but maybe we could look into, into it. Is the youth committee, um, meeting already? And if so, what are they working on? And the last thing is, I would like to see the mem, a commissioner of planning, parks and recs, beautification, to come and meet once a month with us or pre, do a presentation of what they're working on. I think it's, it's good for them to see us and not just have to go through staff and tell, staff telling them what we're looking for. I would like to hear from them, their report. What are we working on? What, you know, they think of our city? That's why we put them as a commission. So I would like to, if that's possible, if the colleagues, um, agree on that, I would like to see that. That will be all.
Mr. Mayor, Council, do you want to respond to a couple of, okay, so, um, on the art program, Mr. Reyes, if you could respond to that, where we're at with that?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Uh, regarding the, the beautification committee, they have met with several artists. They're still meeting with a few more. Um, they did come up with samples of all the artists' works. Um, they are looking to use local artists, people that actually live in Landale. Um, and a few of the submissions were from local artists. Um, they're still just making decisions on who they pick. They only meet once a month roughly, so, um, they're still having meetings. But, um, it is moving forward. Um, they have, uh, chosen locations that they prefer. We have many more boxes than we actually have dollars to spend, so there's going to probably only be about 15 boxes that'll be covered. Um, a lot of the artists are going to donate the cost of their work, though. So most of the costs are just going to be for the wrappings that we do to put onto the boxes.
Have we tried working with Moa and the school district?
As Moa's been a part of it, they've, they've presented a number of, of, uh, artists to us. Um, we haven't reached out to the district, but we did put a message out to, just locally, that we were looking for artists. So we did get a lot of submissions, but like I said, they're looking for, uh, artists that have a history with Landale, either a residence or, or work here. Um, and they did get some very good submissions, so I showed some to Sean. Um, they just need to make a decision on what they'd like to do.
I mean, it would be nice to also have our students, uh, high school students, some of them are great artists, um, participate in it.
Uh, there were some student applications that actually came in.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor and Council, on the update on the corner lot, uh, Jared's department approved a hotel there on the, on the Manhattan Beach and Hawthorne. We're working, we're waiting for the, the conditionally approved, the site plan review. We're waiting for the developer to come back and submit for entitlements on that property. And then with, with regards to the costs of, you know, for staffing, uh, Mr. Estes, the former director, brought this up several times. Um, we follow the ad hoc committee's budget recommendations, but we can certainly go back and look at updating that and bringing something to mid-year something in the mid-year for consideration. I too have been getting calls from Southwest about various issues, and they've been out there daily, and even on Fridays and Saturdays, I get calls, you know how to respond, so we can look into that. And then with the Longdale, Longdale Beach, I can ask Jason to provide some updates on ridership, and Mr. Estes is to provide that, so we'll get that update on that. And then the Youth Advisory Committee, I know they've met, Jason, do you want to come up and say a few words? I know there's a couple of things in the works on that.
Good evening again, Jason Mender, Community Services Director. The Youth Advisory Committee's had two meetings, a lot of those, you know, the dialogue in the first two meetings is just advising them on what their role is, what the Brown Act is, and how to go through meetings. We have talked about the field trip that we will be taking, hopefully in early September, to the TAP program at the City of Norwalk, so that's, you know, kind of been the focus of it, we should have three youth advisory committees join us in our game area tomorrow, because that's one way for the youth advisory committee members to interact with the public, and hopefully we get some, some games. So after you tour all of the booths at National Night Out, come over and play some games with us over in our little recreation area, but we're trying to find ways to get the commissioners, they've been invited as well, and the youth advisory committees, opportunities to meet with the public outside of just a formal meeting, and hopefully if you are there, you can stop by and meet some of them as well.
Thank you.
And then finally, Mayor and Council, we'll look at, into, you know, that might be a little bit of a challenge, bringing Commissioner, the chairmans of each commission to show up, but we'll ask them and see if they're interested.
I, I feel that it, to me, if, when I was in planning, if someone would have said, why don't you do a little presentation once a month on what you're working on, it made, would make me feel a part of a council, part of the city, not just someone that sits behind the desk and, you know, approves whatever is put in front of them. That, that's just my.
Understood, and we'll, we'll reach out to the commissioners and see if they're interested in doing some kind of presentations.
Okay, thank you. Hoffman-Gorman.
All right.
Ma'am.
So I also attended the Contract Cities event on the 17th, it was a really nice presentation, courtesy of the Fire Department, with their helicopters dropping water and doing their demonstration, and it was kind of cool, because today we had a fire, and I sat there and watched the dropping helicopters and thought, wow, here I was, feet from them on that night, so that was a really nice evening. Also, I attended the California Contract Cities Legislative Committee Meeting, and I was a guest of the Chargers in their new.
Training camp.
Training camp, training facility over here in El Segundo, it's absolutely fabulous, had a really nice event on that. I too, though, have a couple of questions, if I could. The first one is, I wanted to ask what the status is of our cameras for license plate readers.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. The final component for getting the cameras was they needed SIM cards, those SIM cards are ordered, they should be delivered this week, and then they can be installed with SIM cards.
So we might be still, we might be within the one or two weeks.
Yeah, I would imagine by the next council meeting that the work had already been up and running, this was the sheriffs that were actually handling this, so it all had to go through them, not through city staff, but, and there was some slowdowns with the, with the permitting process with other cities that actually own the poles, so that did slow everything down, but the last step was to get the SIM cards, and they've already been ordered, and they should have actually already arrived, so we can, I can talk to Sarge or Lieutenant and find out, and tomorrow at National Night Out, I probably have an answer for you on the specific time.
That sounds great, thank you.
I was going to add too, just to correct the captain, National Night Out actually starts tomorrow at 5:00 in our plaza, not, not 6:00, so please come at 5:00, it's open to everyone in the public, and we want everyone to go and have a good time. Thank you.
The second thing I wanted to ask is, is there a way that we could write a letter on a particular Southwest Patrol Officer who did an incredible job at catching someone in the act of breaking into a home? I think that that was absolutely outstanding and needs to be recognized.
Mayor and Council, we can look into that and bring something for you to, to review. Again, I just, you know, I talk to Southwest daily, we reminded them, we appreciate them, the residents are building a rapport with them, they consider them kind of like their, they do reach out, I do, I'm aware of a situation that just happened on Friday, I just let the council know, I guess, some homeless individual may have been, and again, Southwest was involved, was setting fire to one of the laundromats on Hawthorne Boulevard, and they, the resident came up to Southwest, so they're a very important component of bringing this information, and the Southwest called 911, and then they, the individual was arrested or found, or chased down by the sheriff's investigated, so they are a good part of the community, they're building a rapport, but we just want to stress that they are definitely not law enforcement, they're there for homeless outreach and vendor education.
But it's amazing what they see going on in our community.
They do. We'll bring something forward for the council to entertain a letter.
The last thing that I wanted to talk about is, we had a big fiasco on Tuesday, the 16th of July, in our neighborhood pertaining to trash pickup, and I don't know if any of you can talk, because residents have stopped me and talked to me about all of the misses that Republic did, and since I have been here and talked about some of the issues that are going on with the trash, the trash haulers, I would like to know if anybody from staff could make a comment on that whole issue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so we, you know, a few, a few weeks ago, we had numerous missed pickups, not just one household, whole streets. Ahmad's apartment that he's overseeing looked into the matter, and they got back to me as well, we called, it all went into the Saturday, the route manager contacted me directly on Friday, and said they had, they first of all had a breakdown, and then they had, somebody got hurt on the job, so they've had numerous issues, the reason, the justification for missing the trash pickups, then we received comments and emails from concerned residents past that, that some of the recycling was not picked up, and other general trash, and then also green waste, so we've received it, I just want the council to be aware, we're documenting all the missed pickups, Grace and Public Works does a tremendous job tracking that, and they will get fined for non-compliance of the contract, I guess they don't call it fine, but they, if they don't comply with the contract, they get fined, I've set updates to the council periodically on this, and so they would definitely be, it'll be addressed.
All right, thank you, and lastly, I'd just like to say, I cannot wait to see everybody tomorrow night from 5:00 p.m. till 7:00, at our National Night Out event here at City Hall. That's all I have.
Okay, I just have about four things. I also attended the Contract City Board of Directors Meeting, Fiesta Days at the Lake County Fire Training Center, I attended the Oalana Eye, Hawaiian Days, Alondra Park, I saw some of my brothers there, they were all happening. I went to the Charger Training Camp Chairman's Lounge invite, Charger looked better than the Raiders ever did, I must say that, and then also with the Bear Pro Tim and I, attended the LTN, which is Local Travel Network Ad hoc Committee on the 30th, it was well received, and we're moving forward with that. And I have no questions.
You have no questions?
I have a lot of answers, but no questions.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
I had two meetings, the South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors Meeting, that was the last Thursday in July, nothing that I can think of to report on that, and then as Councilmember Kearney mentioned, the Local Travel Network, I think a lot of questions or hesitations or what, and what have you, were explained in, in better detail, so I think we're all comfortable with that. And then I did have a question, we're during summer break right now, and we had a subcommittee, I want to say, for the, the schools and the ticketing, I don't think I remember what the, if there was ever a, like a briefing on what was agreed to or how that was handled, so I was wondering if we could get an update on that, you know, the, the school traffic in the mornings.
We haven't known anything since last year.
I guess the only reason I'm, I'm asking is because school's supposed to start in a couple of weeks, or a few weeks, so, you know, before that happened, if there was ever a resolution.
Mayor and Council, I, I'd have to go back and look in the notes, I don't know if we've had any resolution on it, I know there was a report out, but I'd have to get back to you on that, and what the report was, if, if that's okay, I can email that to you guys, and we can bring it back up if you want it to agendaize.
And can I piggyback on that? The Board of Direct, the Board of Supervisors are looking on disbanding SROs for the schools, I believe, they're looking at that to disband them, so we might not have them anymore if Board of Supervisors decide to do this.
Mayor and Council, I think what we're talking about is the Traffic Committee, where we're meeting on parking enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but he's.
I know Mr. Reyes has been working closely with the parking enforcement, and making sure that we work closely with the schools, as well as the residents, to try to minimize the sites as best as we can, we haven't, I don't think the last quarter, when school was in, I don't think we had too many complaints last time, but we'll definitely bring back what the ad hoc brought out, and then bring it back for, if you guys want to agendaize it, let me know.
I, I think our next meeting, school doesn't start yet, but I would just be curious, because once it does start at the end of August, it was just a question, because we're coming into the school year, so I just wasn't sure if there was ever anything done. But that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I attended the open house of Assemblywoman Tina McKinner, she had an open house for her district, and it was well attended, so I did attend that, I also attended the Contract Cities, as you guys mentioned, the Fiesta Days, sponsored by the Fire Department, that was a great event, and that was really interesting to see, I actually got a good video footage of the, the water dropping helicopter, so that was great. I attended the California Joint Insurance Powers Authority's General Meeting, where we elected a Board of Directors for the, the upcoming year, that board went unchanged, everyone retained their seats. Just a announcement, we have a new store in town. We have a Sprouts supermarket, grand opening August the 9th, which is this Friday, and guess what time it is?
7:00 a.m.
6:15 a.m.
No, 6:15.
Okay, give or take.
And then we do a photo op, and the store actually opens at 7:00 a.m.
Right before the store opens, so it's going to be early in the morning, ribbon cutting, grand opening early in the morning, this Friday, so all those in the community, if you can make it, we'd like to see you there, this is going to be a wonderful addition to our, our community, it's really a game changer to have a Sprouts here in the City of Longdale, and, and I would imagine that that's going to spark some more economic development activities, it's a wonderful addition to, of course, the, the, the market across the street, the plaza across the street, which is the, the Target, and so we got some good things coming up, and there's supposed to be a Starbucks going to be developed on that corner as well, drive-through, a drive-up Starbucks, so that's going to be, invigorate that corner there, so we look forward to everyone coming out this Friday, August the 9th.
Can I piggyback on you?
Six or, yeah, six in the morning.
And if you go text this word to this thing, you get 20% off your total shopping bill, that, the 9th through the 11th.
Yes, and the word is Long.
I think we all got postcards, I got a postcard in the mail.
Yeah, we did receive.
All the residents got that, so.
And on the postcard, it tells you to text this.
Yeah, whatever that.
Long to some number, and you get 20% off, yeah, so that's good.
Mayor, one more addition to add to the Sprouts real quick, not to interrupt, just want to let everyone know that actually working with the developer, he's almost finalizing a new Wells Fargo going inside on the backside of the, we asked him to go forward with that, I pressured him to get that moving forward, because we need that, an inside branch bank here, so it'll be off to the side on the Hawthorne side, hopefully, fingers crossed, we should have a, a new bank, looks like the deal is almost finally closed.
So that's going to be great to have that Wells Fargo there, because there's, there's a move afoot to remove some of these banking institutions from supermarkets, and particularly the Vons that's right outside of our, our community, they're going to be losing that bank, I believe it's a Wells Fargo, that bank, right? So this would be a great opportunity for us to pick up those, and what I would be interested in, now that there's a, going to be a bank there, the Community Reinvestment Act, so as people may know, the Community Reinvestment Act, basically, in short, it, it requires banking institutions or, you know, lenders institutions, financial institutions to, to, I don't think there's a quota, but let's say to give back a certain amount of loans, small business loans, home loans, or what have you, right, in the community for which their patrons come from, it's always a source of controversy, because it's, it's hard to determine whether or not the, the banking institution have, if they are in compliance with the Community Reinvestment Act, I started to say redevelopment, investment act, so I don't know if that's something how we can monitor that, to see, to make sure, and this wouldn't just be the City of Longdale, because it's not city-specific, it's like a market, so even probably banks in Hawthorne or in Torrance, as long as it's in a certain radius, and I don't know what that radius would be, would have to demonstrate that they have lived up to their requirements to give loans in the community, so I would be interested to, to talk with Wells Fargos about their involvement in the community, for us to read Investment Act is concerned. You got anything else you want to add on?
No, you did it quite well.
Whose turn was it?
Yours.
Oh, that was my turn, okay, two other, two. So we got that email about the Beach Cities Health District's Mental Health Service, have you guys seen that, that email, basically in short, they're going to be providing mental health services to SPAR 8, which includes the City of Longdale and other cities that's outside of the, the Beach City Health District, so I'm a little confused as to, one, how do we receive services when we're not in the, the Beach District area? I know it's a grant, but some people would argue that they captured some cities that's outside of that, so that they can meet the requirement to have non-white, a percentage of non-white participants, but yet, most of the resources are still going to Redondo Beach, in that area, which doesn't fit the criteria, right? So it, it makes it sound as if they captured a certain area so they can qualify, but it's not really spending the money in those areas, so two questions, do the City of Longdale qualify, even though we're not, we're not in the Beach Cities, we're not part of that district, and two, if we do qualify to be part of it, what does that mean for, for us in terms of actually receiving mental health services through that program? So if we can get some more information about that, that would be wonderful.
No problem, Mayor.
Okay. The next item I have, as we know, the, the Olympics is coming up in 2028, and a lot of cities are preparing for the Olympics, obviously the City of L.A. is preparing, because they're the host, host city, but we are the host state, you know, the host county, you know, and with that being said, we have some activities, as you mentioned, Mr. City Manager, the, the development of the new hotel, as well as the hotels that we have here, I was thinking that we, that we need to at least be mindful in thinking of a marketing plan, so that we can see how we, as a city, can capture those dollars that's coming through L.A. County for tourists, that's coming to the, the Olympics, whether it's through our hotels, our businesses, what have you, or just, including losing, you know, high schools, seeing that they're the Olympians, you know, what have you, how do we market ourselves? So when people come from out of town, they may make a decision to stay in Longdale, seeing that we're closer to the airport than, of course, Los Angeles, depending, of course, what part of Los, most of Los Angeles, and even Inglewood, they have some games or whatever at Inglewood, so I'm, I'm thinking, I don't have it fully flushed out, but I'm thinking that we should put some thought into marketing the city, or to get the city what I call Olympics ready, similar to what they're doing in the City of L.A. and, and other cities, they're not the only one that's doing it, so I just wanted to bring that to our attention. So if you can put some thought into that, you don't have to give any words, but if you can put some thought into that.
No problem, Mayor and Council, no problem.
And with that, that's all I have, and I will close there. So we have two closed sessions tonight, item 10A and 10B, and I'm going to ask the City Attorney to give us a provision of the closed session.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, closed session will be held pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D, item A is Provision D2, and item B is Provision D1, this should not be an unduly long closed session, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will resume to closed session. Who did that? Who did that?